All right. I am going to call to order the Town of Andover Board of Selectment Regular Meeting for Monday, February tenth, two thousand and twenty five. We are getting started at seven oh four. Our first order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. First item up is a public speak. So I am going to start with Don Denly because he was the one that wanted to speak during the budget portion of this.
Okay, so Carol Lee, you heard now? I'm on line now?
You could be heard.
Okay, so just like to make a few comments about the budget, which is looking like it's a dangerous place this year with eight percent in the Board of Ed, two full-time positions, and a couple of upgrades in spending in the, thanks for the eye roll. I appreciate that, yeah? The spending, the spending, town spending and I lost in the grant list, which I didn't hear the explanation on, but I'm sure I will at our town meeting, which I'm happy we still have town meetings. My concern in general has been the spending in Public Works where for many years we had three people in Public Works, some older equipment that apparently was well-maintained and lasted longer than we thought it would. And now we have five people, one very well-paid supervisor, and we have the same mileage, same roads. I hear this comments about cul-de-sacs, but I'm not a cul-de-sac expert. But I think there are some ways in this budget needs to come down because otherwise it's gonna, it's gonna be a huge hardship on everybody. You guys all know that, just speaking to the choir here probably. So I'll certainly be more involved in the budget process and try to give input reasonable for education, always have been, been in town for a long time. I've seen a lot of balanced budgets and hopefully we can bring it down a little bit so it's palatable for everybody. Thank you.
Okay, I'll move over. Shannon Loudon and Jerry Creme are sitting together, so you guys have at it.
I'll go first. I want to ask the Board of Selectment to support Carol Lee for the open position. She's not only Republican Party endorsed, but the town Republican Party endorsed her. But the other people who've come before you have done that too. Carol Lee is different. She's worked for you. She's worked for the town. People like her. She's fair. She's honest. She's everything I think that would be good for your Board of Selectment. They should make an excellent member.
I'm also here to support Carol's candidacy. I don't believe you could find a better member who has more experience and knowledge about the Town of Andover and cares about the Town of Andover. Twenty-six years as our town clerk, doing everything beyond what a clerk should be doing and tremendous involvement in lots of different activities and committees in this town. I just think she would be a tremendous asset to the Board of Selectment. Thanks for your consideration.
Kathy and Mike Palazzi?
The only comment I have is representing the Republican Town Committee and mentioning that I did forward a letter to the Board of Selectmen endorsing Carol Lee that they had supported for a hundred percent. Thank you.
Joanne Ebert?
I'm all set right now. Thank you.
All right, Liz Lokic?
Hi, I'd also like to just endorse Carol Lee as well. She obviously has the experience, knows the town inside and out, and is fair, well-known by everybody and well-liked by everybody. I think you can't go wrong with her. And I guess I'll just leave it there. You can't go wrong with her. She's, she's my girl.
Danny Holskow?
No comments. I just, I submitted mine in writing to the members of the Board of Selectmen prior to this meeting. So, thank you.
All right, Scott Sayet?
I'm basically echoing what others have said. Carol has been such a great asset to this town. She would be fantastic on the Selectman. I have one other totally unrelated comment. I happen to notice that the link to the charter on the town website is still out of date. It's still a 2022 version. So I don't know whose responsibility it is to put the new version up there, but I know it's out. So at some point, somebody can take that on.
Carol Lee?
I would like to thank you Jeff and our town attorney for all the nice comments that you made on the January. Thank you.
Marcy Minor?
Hi, I don't have anything new to say, other than I disagree with whatever, I agree with everybody saying about Carol Lee. I think she'd be a wonderful asset to the town. She knows just about everything there is to know about the town. She's fair. She's reasonable. Just take it wrong with her. She's very popular. So I think it would be unpopular to go against her. So anyway, that's it. Thank you guys for everything you do and we appreciate it.
Elaine Bukart?
Hi, I'm just playing catch-up. I was out of the country most of the month of January and I'm shocked that Carol Lee has resigned. So, but definitely, I put in my hat for Carol. She makes the most sense for the Board of Selectmen. And even though she's not our town clerk anymore, I know she's going to stay involved in everything in the town that she has been involved in. Thanks.
Diane Griner? Okay, Diane, you're having trouble. I'll come back to you. Dave Gustanian?
Hi Jeff, the chief and I are here to address the question of the tax abatement for the fire department. If you need, if you have any questions.
Jeff, you are muted. Sorry, my dog's barking in the background. Dave, we'll come back to you at that point in time. Kimberly Persson?
Hi, I sent an email in earlier today just supporting Carol Lee. And that's all I have to say for now. Thank you.
Valerie Brunn?
Nothing at this time. I'm here for when you guys address the solar.
Stephen King?
I'm here in support of the ARTC candidate Carol Lee. And I think it would be a shame if she receives any less than one hundred percent unanimous support for the current board. Thank you.
Absolutely. Ryan Laneras?
Hello, I'm here for the solar as well.
Okay, understood. Grace, Grace is? Okay, Diane Griner, do you have your, your? You there yet or no? Not yet. Okay. You're, you're a little tinny, but. Nope, I think we gotta redo it, Diane. Sorry. Okay, I have a phone number that ends in two, three, four, five. Is that Attorney O'Brien?
Not this one?
Getting closer.
Yeah, that's Attorney O'Brien.
Yeah, you're good. I'll skip you. Leann Hutchinson? Tess Gross?
Nothing at this time.
Caitlin McIntosh?
I'm all set. Thank you.
Alicia?
I'm all set. Thank you.
Okay. Did I get to everyone besides Diane Griner? All right, Diane Griner, one last shot.
Is this one?
Yeah, we'll give it a go. You sound like you have two, two microphones on, but go ahead.
No, I don't. Oh, I don't know what that is. I don't have anything important to say.
We all missed Diane's birthday last month, so that is sad. Just saying, not sad, but happy birthday, Diane. All right, we're going to move on to, unless I missed anybody and somebody wants to say something. We're going to move on to item three, additions, changes to the agenda. Does anybody have anything? I would like to request that we move item ten A to six B. It's action related to the resignation of the town clerk Carol Lee. I'd like to move it up to underneath the resignation of Walter Weir. I think it's, it's appropriate that we talk about that for the appointment to the board. I just want to clarify a couple items. Somebody second that for me?
I second that.
Okay. I just want to verify, you know, Jeff Murray, you and I have just this discussion on this. You and I have spoken about Carol Lee and having Carol Lee work for the town as in a position. I just want to clarify what our intentions are and make sure that the resignation has been processed. So that's why I'd like to move it for those purposes. So, all those in favor? Aye. Okay, anything else that we need to move? Yeah, anything that we need to add? Okay. Don Denly, keep yourself on mute most of the time.
Yeah.
Forget it. There you go.
On mute.
Now, now, now you're muted. Thank you. Okay, let's go to item four, Board and Commission Presentations. Do we have anything tonight, Eric?
We do not.
Do not. Okay. Item five, appointments. We don't have anything?
Correct.
Okay. Item six, resignations. We received in our packet a resignation from Walter Weir. Walter has served on the Board of, zoning Board of Appeals for as long as I've lived in this town. And I know Walter ran into some hard times and had some illness and sad that we will have to be replacing him on the boarding, Board of Zoning Appeals. So if it was not for Walter, I would not have my house as it is currently done. And I know that is happy days for the people that live across the lake and have to look at my McMansion. So I appreciate Walter a lot. Okay, item six B, action related to the resignation of the town clerk Carol Lee. Carol, if you could, I just, I just want to verify that you know I've had discussions with you over the last month related to this. And I just want to hear it because what, two things on my end. One, have you submitted your resignation to the Secretary of State's office?
I have the form that was supposed to be submitted. I was going to have the assistant town clerk sign on, but it's all filled out.
So it's filled out and not submitted?
Correct.
But just so.
They are, the Secretary's.
Okay, but so, so we're all aware, just wanted to be stated, you are resigning as the town clerk of the Town of Andover.
I am retiring because the pension plan just doesn't fit me.
No, I, listen, you and I both are aware. I'm very aware of you would rather not resign the town clerk's position. And I respect that. And I've even told you I didn't want you to resign as the town clerk. I am asking, I have to ask this very specific question. Are you resigning as the town clerk?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Because if not, it had an impact on the Board of Selectmen issue. Okay. So now, for the rest of us on the board. Listen, none of us, none of us on this board can question Carol's commitment to the town and what she's done for this town for the twenty-six years she served. So let's all get out of our heads that there's something going on. Carol is an unbelievable asset to this community and hopefully will continue to be an asset to this community. Jeff, are we going to employ Carol Lee as an admin or in some function so that she can assist the town clerk's office in Andover moving forward?
Well, that is not my decision. That is a board decision.
No, I know. I'm asking, are we going to propose that? That's what I'm asking. I'm trying to get through so everybody is clear as to what we're trying to do here. Because in my head, you and I had a conversation with Carol Lee when she told us, hmm, we both agreed without the other votes of the other members, which I would assume they would vote with us, that Carol is going to have a paid position in the town hall as some type of administrator to fulfill, she has a nineteen-hour requirement. We're going to pay her for her services to the community to assist in moving forward with the town clerk's office. I'm for it. I'm telling you, I'm in favor of that. I just want to know that there would be agreement among the other Board of Selectment members to do that.
I'm just one of four, so it's up to the other two members and you to vote. I mean, I just say we, we make a motion, we discuss it, and we vote on it.
Okay.
It's like we're doing everything else.
No, 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 I know. I'm not, this is, this is, this is a global, like us just, listen, we have not talked anything about what's going on. I'm just trying to understand what we're asking to have happen. I will make a motion that we sit there and authorize the town administrator to hire Carol Lee in an administrative position for up to nineteen hours at a salary to be addressed with the other budgeted line items within, in that area. Somebody going to second that?
I did.
Scott seconded? Okay. Somebody raised their hands, but I'm, oh, Eric raised your hand.
Sure. So I have a couple of things to say. And the, the first is that you probably ought to discuss that in executive session because there are some implications since the majority of the workforce here is union. It would make it difficult in some ways for her to work in most of the offices as a non-union employee.
Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna respectfully, I'm gonna respectfully tell you, we will discuss things in executive session, but this is being done in public. And I intend to do this in public.
So my solution, which is what I proposed to Carol, but I don't think she's going to go for, is that there is no reason why she has to resign as town clerk.
Yes, there is.
Town could simply make an agreement with Carol that she works no more than fifteen hours a week and retains the title of town clerk as long as she wants, which is what I suggested originally. Now, but that also takes her wanting that, and she apparently doesn't. So, but I want to.
Eric, Eric, I understand. I've, I've had that conversation with Carol. I have tried to address that with Carol. That was my recommendation to Carol. We're in a different spot right now. So I'm trying to get through the rest of this meeting to understand what we have to do and where we want to go. I want the public, now listen, I'm going to be really honest with the public tonight. So I'm going to tell the public as much as I possibly can related to every type of decision that's going to be made. I, I really want the Board of Selectmen on the record that we're going to hire Carol in some capacity, whether she's a consultant, whether it's a paid employee. We are all committed to sit there and, and hire Carol Lee to assist and go forward. Right? How we do it, Eric, is a different thing. You might tell us we have to do it this way. The town attorney might tell us we have to do it one way. We're going to figure it out. But I'm trying to get to the point that Carol Lee, listen. We went and tried to do the charter revision issue to address this issue. It just came up really fast. Carol would never have given up her position as town clerk. She loves it. Please, everybody out here got to understand Carol loves that position. It is killing her that she has to retire and do what's right for her family. But this is the situation we're in. So I'm just trying to go through this so that we're all moving forward. All the issues you, Eric, are addressing are detailed issues that we all have to resolve. But on a global level, this board has to sit there and all come together, not Jeff Murray and Jeff McGuire, and say that we're going to hire Carol Lee. So the other two members have to weigh in on it. And then we have to sit there and execute the process of what we're doing.
Jeff, I think we need to clarify this, that this is going to be a consultant role only. It's going to be, she's not going to be doing any direct work as town clerk. This is just offering guidance. And it would, and her employment would terminate once we had a permanent town clerk and an assistant town clerk.
Okay, understood.
Because that way, that would, that would, that would, that would help with the transition.
Okay.
And you know, I feel, I hear you. I would really have loved to see that charter revision pass because this wouldn't have been a non-issue. We could have posted this position and been out and hired somebody from another town, a really good assistant town clerk, possibly. But we've got the cards dealt that we've gotten. So we have to do what we have to do to keep the town running.
Understood. And, and I'm with you a hundred percent. And you know, we both know that Carol Lee, in her role as town clerk, did a great job for the community, did a great job for all the people. And it's just, it's a, Carol, Carol was extremely sad when she announced that she had to do this. So let's just put it that way. Let's all understand where we're at and what we're doing. So I just want to call for a vote that we're going to move forward in that direction. With everything Jeff Murray said, with all the details will be, will be put out there. But we're all in agreement that we're going to offer some level of employment or consulting contract to Carol Lee to assist in the transition of the town clerk's office. Right? So, all in favor?
I just, I just want to make sure she's got her name in for the position on the Board of Selectmen. I just want to make sure this doesn't interfere with that.
No, no, no. What she said before was one issue I had to address. I had to address that she effectively resigned. And this, this is not, this will have implications to that because, but it will not, it doesn't sit there and say discount her from being one of the candidates. No.
Okay.
All right, so you're voting yes? Okay, for nothing. Okay. All right. So just so I, I'm going to reiterate, Carol effectively stated on our meeting, we, because we don't have a piece of paper. And this was always my issue that, and Dennis, I'll come back to you in one second. This was always my issue with what Carol wrote to us as a board, that she was announcing her retirement. And her retirement and her resignation from the position of the town clerk, to me, were two different things. To, to other members of the board, to the town attorney, they were the same thing. I sit there and looked at it very, I looked at it as she is announcing her retirement. And as an elected official, she didn't need to resign her position as town clerk. And I'm going to go through with everybody here what I wanted to do, which was similar to what Eric wanted to do. I wanted Carol to retain the position of the town clerk because it's an elected position. She could have kept the title as town clerk. We could have worked through, even gotten to the next election if we needed to. And it would have eliminated some of the, the issues related to the problem, interactions between the town clerk and the town administrator. So I'm just sitting there expressing that that's what I wanted done. I wanted to avoid some, some level of drama. That's what I had hoped would happen. I understand from Carol's perspective, and it was Carol's choice. And I always told Carol it was her choice. But I had to get an understanding if she effectively resigned. Because if she didn't resign, the two positions of town, Board of Selectment member and town clerk are incompatible. Now, Attorney O'Brien, I know, wants to speak toward that. So I'll let him go ahead and do that.
Well, I, you know, I'm still, I'm still a little fuzzy on what you're doing. I don't, Carol has just said that she hasn't filed a resignation letter yet. I wanted to know if the assistant town clerk, is an assistant town clerk working in the town clerk's office now?
Yes.
Has that assistant town clerk been appointed?
Yes.
By you, Carol?
Yes.
So have you, have you notified the Secretary of the State's office?
Yes.
Okay, so that's all set.
Correct.
Do you have an assistant town clerk in, in the town clerk's office?
Yes.
And she's official? I assume it's a she. I think I've heard that. Okay. So I'm not, I'm still unclear on what your, what her position of Jeff is going to be with the town. Is it exclusively in the town clerk's office?
We're going to work out the details.
Okay, you know, I, I'm troubled a bit because there, some of you may know this, but there is a state statute on incompatible town positions. And one, the first one that's mentioned in the statute is town clerk and Board of Selectmen. And I'm not sure it applies to an assistant. I'm not sure it applies to the position that Carol will have, if it's not just as a consultant. But it really leaves me up in the air as town attorney in determining whether that statute applies to Carol's situation, given that she is a candidate for the Board of Selectmen. I'm concerned about it.
Okay, understood.
I don't know the answer. I don't know the answer because I don't know what you're doing with the position. And I'm, I'm, you know, I'm a little bit.
We have a lot of.
Faggy on this because.
Attorney O'Brien.
Yes, there's a lot of issues.
We have a lot of issues related to this. This is not a simple thing. This has not been a simple thing. We're, we're trying to work through all the issues. But right now, we have, we have a resignation that Carol has verbally delivered to us. I realize it's not an effective resignation because she hasn't submitted it to the Secretary of State, which is problematic, but understood. I'm going to, I'm going to, we're going to move forward with the rest of this. We, as a board, understand Carol, Carol is, Carol is, listen, Carol is the town clerk's office, has been the town clerk's office, and, and, and right now it still is the town clerk's office. She's working to train someone. It's okay. We're all, we're going to try to do the best that we possibly can related to that situation. Right? Now, the fact, Dennis, that all the paperwork hasn't been filed and the fact that we haven't moved forward as quickly as we would have liked, that's an issue. There's no doubt. Anybody, you can sit there and say whatever you want. There's issues. But we're going to overlook those issues to move forward and try. But we're gonna overlook those issues to move forward and try to. Get to the next step of this. So does anybody on the board have any issues related to what we just did? Okay, so now I wanna move on to item. Seven, appointment of new Board of Selectmen candidates and I, I would like to go through and do the interviews. I had. Called each one of the candidates over the weekend. I expressed to them that you each have, um. Three to five minutes to speak and then the Board of Selectman members could ask questions and then. We would move to executive session and, and come back and vote on this. So, um, I'm gonna start with Carol Lee, cause you're seven A, Carol. If you'd like to make a statement to, uh. To the board and to the residents and attendants, you're on the clock.
Thank you. And as you said, I have served over 26 years in the clerk's office. I served on five terms, five clear terms for the ordinance for DPA. I served on the state committee for the town office in 2013 and 2024. I served on the 150th anniversary committee and three charter revision provisions.
Please mute. Sorry, Carol, Carol, one thing. Are you and Don in the same area? Okay, so. He's gotta turn off, he's gotta mute on his machine as best he can. Alright, or if you're on this, you're not on the same machine, so you got two different machines somewhere. But, go ahead Carol, and I apologize.
I'm currently on recreation and memorial. I've volunteered in several areas of town. In your lunch program, friends in the library. And the Veterans Monument. Our quick walk. Dedicated to our town and I will be committed to searching and researching. Terms of our residents. I've needed my background in public service.
Carol, thank you. Are, are you, that completes your.
I was not watching the clock, but I think I'm within the five minutes.
Oh my God, Carol, you are within, you are within the timeline. I don't even think you went far enough to sit there and say everything that you've done for the community, so. Please understand that. I mean, I'll be honest, there's only, there's Carol Lee and there's Kathy Blasi. There's only two people that donate that much time and energy to this community. Without a doubt, but Carol, I wanna ask you a couple of questions. Carol, have you registered as a Republican?
I have not.
You're unaffiliated, okay? And then, um, Carol, what's your professional relationship with the town administrator Eric Anderson?
I worked with Eric for many years since he's been here.
I, I'm sorry, you echoed. I didn't hear that part.
What are you asking?
I'm asking you about your personal relationship with Eric Anderson. Do you have a good personal working relationship or do you have a bad person, a bad relationship? What is this status?
I, sorry, I'm concerned. I have an okay working relationship and I do not have a problem with him.
Now that, that's kinda hard for me to, to sit there and, and deal with because. From my standpoint, uh, you know, a lot of what I have to do as for selectmen is to sit there and. Run interference between the town administrator's office and the town clerk's office back when you were the town clerk. So it's hard for me to sit there and, and. Believe that you have a good working relationship with the town administrator. Because, and I can give you some. Some really easy examples, I mean.
Point of order. This is, this is, has nothing to do with her, uh, discussion of election to the seat.
It doesn't?
Point of order, yes, it does.
It does, for me. I mean, I'm trying to sit there.
Jeff, you're playing politics. Let's just get on with it. No, relationships with employees or anybody, it has no bearing on a selectman's seat whatsoever. No bearing whatsoever and all your questions should be stricken from the record.
If you would like to make that recommendation, you go ahead, Mr. Murray.
I would like to strike Jeff McGuire's questions about Carol Lee and the town administrator be stricken from this meeting and this record.
Anyone gonna second that?
I'll second that.
Alright, all those in favor? All those opposed? Okay. Any other questions for Carol?
So just to answer that, I've always kept everything professional with Eric. And the only other thing that I would like to request is that you. Discuss my candidacy in public session, not executive.
Understood, that's acceptable to me. Is it acceptable to every, every other member? Okay. Alright. Let's move on to, uh, Don Denly. Don, you can please unmute now. Carol, if you could turn off your microphone for a second.
How do we do that, Carol? You should be able to speak?
Yep, we can hear you. Not anymore.
I'm not, I'm not a electronics specialist, that's for sure. I'm Donald Denly. Uh, let's be clear. Carol Lee is the heart and soul of this town. I'm here to offer to serve my town if needed. I'm an Andover resident since 1990. Served on the inland wetland committee, two charter revision committees, and eight years on the Board of Finance. I'm an Army veteran, self-employed businessman. Had a bachelor's degree in business administration with an accounting major. I'm here hoping that the vacant selectman position gets filled tonight. I'm more than willing, but I've seen two qualified endorsed candidates, Alicia Lee and Stephen King passed over for this Republican seat. I would heartily endorse and prefer you select Carol Lee to be our next selectman. Thank you.
Uh, anyone have any questions for Don? Okay. We could move to seven B, but I'm assuming we're not gonna move to executive session, so we're gonna have this discussion in public. Everybody good with that? Okay.
Do we wanna talk to Danny Hillsclaw and see who's on the agenda?
Danny is on the agenda, but Danny sent us a letter, uh, withdrawing his name from consideration and endorsing Carol Lee.
Okay, as long as that's written in the record.
Why don't we wanna have an executive session, Jeff?
Um, because Carol asked that we do this in public. I mean, if you guys wanna go to executive session for a second, we can go to executive session, but we should really have this conversation in public. Because here's my thing, Scott, and I am, I am. I am. I've tried to not. Everything I've ever done in the six years that I've been the first selectman is try not to have any drama. I've tried not to have any drama even with this. And the goal is to sit there and put a member on this board, but. We. You, 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 you're gonna get pushback saying that, you know, it's a Democrat and a power play. I was happier with three Republicans. Uh, and two Democrats on this board. We were more productive, we were more collegial, we got things accomplished. We never had a problem. So, and I need everybody in the public to understand that. The prior board was three Republicans and two Democrats. And we never had a problem.
Ever, ever had a problem.
Never. No, well, and actually, let's not lie, let's not lie. We had problems, but you know what we did? We handled them in private. And we had conversations in private and we dealt. It's very, it's, it's very much understanding that this is not. Democrat, like there's people on this board that are trying to. This, this is, this is not how it went. And I'm gonna explain, I'm gonna, you know, we need to talk about the people, but I'm gonna explain. The last time we had this candidate position. Was when, uh, in 2000 and. Seventeen, 2018, 2018, at that election, no, 2019, I apologize, 2019. Myself, Jeff Murray, uh, Scott Person, Eric Anderson and Adrian Mandeville, all won positions on this board. And when, uh. Our town administrator at that time resigned, uh, to take another position, we wanted to appoint, uh, Eric Anderson. And the four members, uh, the five members of the board, or the four members of the board sat there and came to an agreement. That, okay, we would sit there and do that. And at that point in time, Eric was a Democrat. We sat there and said, okay, to facilitate this. Uh, we want to sit there and put a Republican on the board. We compromised. We put a Republican on the board. And we asked that it be a female member because we were five males and we didn't feel that that was appropriate. And to be really honest, Paula King came on and she was the recommendation, but you know what? I've looked at this. Paula King did not get endorsed by the Republican Town Committee. She was brought to us by the other two members, the Republican members of our board, and we voted on Paula. To put her on our board. It didn't get endorsed by the Republican Town Committee, so this whole endorsement thing is, is new to me, right, but. Paula was the best. I miss Paula. I would take Paula back in a heartbeat to get all of this stuff over with and. As you, you, you may or may not hear from Scott or I, I don't like the drama and I don't like the bickering. But there are reasons why everything has, has happened. And I'll sit there and I'll go through, I'll go through each one, just so everybody understands. The first time we voted, Mr. King. He was gonna be, he was gonna be a difficult person to put on this board because we would have had another member of the board resign. And we would have been in a difficult position, so, um, I chose not to vote for Mr. King. I would have voted for Joe Godwin and I did vote for Joe Godwin. He was a reasonable member, he's, uh, of the community. He sat there and put in a letter. I could understand Jeff Murray not voting for Mr. King, wasn't endorsed by the Republican Town Committee, that's fine. I can't understand Ann Kremay not voting for that person because she's a Democrat, you know? The Democrats on this board are responsible for not putting somebody on this board. We should have all been able to agree and put someone on this board that was acceptable to all three members. And it's not an issue, at least from my end, of anything other than balance on this board. Because I believe everybody. That is trying to put somebody on this board has an agenda related to what they're trying to do. That's my personal opinion. That's how I've looked at this and. I'm gonna move forward and continue to do that because I'm not here. You know, to be really honest, I know Jeff Murray is RTC through and through and through. Uh, the DTC kicked me out of the DTC. I'm no longer a DTC member. I couldn't attend the meetings, so. I'm not a member. I've been ostracized from the DTC. They didn't help me through any of the issues related to the campaign, nothing. They helped Ann Kremay get elected. They did. They did a good job with that and it's causing us our own problems internally.
Didn't help me at, at all either.
Yeah, so, so I look at myself, I have a big A on my head. It's Andover and it's only about Andover. We, we can keep moving on, so. Now, we have to talk about Carol Lee and I know where Jeff and Anne are gonna come from and I'm gonna tell you Carol Lee where I am. I, I, Carol Lee knows that I'm extremely honest with Carol and I, I tell her the truth. And I tell her what I believe to be the truth and, um. There's nobody better for this town than Carol Lee, but that doesn't mean, um. That she's the best person for this Board of Selectmen. And, and the reason why I would tell you that is because. As Chairman of the Board is what I consider myself. I'm not the Chief Executive Officer, I'm the Chairman of the Board. I try to manage what goes on within the town. I try to tell the town administrator where he should focus his time and energy and to be really honest, we don't have a lot of money. So it's not as if, uh, you know, me having a Democrat on my, my line means that I'm a. Tax and spend Democrat. I think Don Denly, uh, sat there and said in my first campaign, if you want higher, you vote McGuire. Well, I, I really haven't been able to sit there and increase taxes because we don't have a tax base, so. You know, what comes out of it is, it comes out of the taxpayers, like the people that own homes in this community and we have to pay for everything, so we've been trying to manage our money. My issue with Carol Lee is very simple. She has terrible relationship with Eric Anderson. The town administrator and, and I'll say that very publicly and very honestly. I deal with more problems between the town clerk's office and the town administrator's office. It was the same situation as to the last candidacy of Alicia Lee. And I expressed that to the other members of this board when I voted no on that candidacy as well because. We as a community have to ask ourselves, or me as the Board of Directors and in my position, I have to ask myself. Is it worth putting on somebody that's going to sit there and. Deal with someone that, uh, has such a slanted view to the Chief Executive Officer of our community. That's what I'm dealing with. Has nothing to do with Carol Lee and how well and what she tries to do for the community because she does do a great job. It has to do with how the balance of the board is situated and what we have to do to move forward. I will get a response from the other members of the Board of Selectmen that you can't oust the, the, the town administrator without four votes. That's true. But you can make the job of the Chief Executive Office of this community a living nightmare. That's what I've been trying to avoid. That's where I've been at for each one of these people. Scout Person and I communicate, we do. I have had zero communication with Jeff Murray or Ann Kremay. Related to any of these people that have been there. I've had some conversations with Ann Kremay. And, and in the beginning, but I realized that that's, it didn't, it wasn't working because I couldn't convince her to vote for a reasonable candidate. Like Beata Gedomsky, who was recommended by, um, Paula King. Paula King recommended Beata for the position, couldn't get Ms. Kremay to vote for her, so we're in this position we're currently in. With Carol Lee, I am not, it's not personal on Carol Lee, has nothing to do with her personally. She is a. Valued member of this community, does more for this community than I can ever imagine and I can't do. Doesn't mean that I want her to sit on my board, the Board of Selectmen as it currently exists.
Your board, huh? Your board?
It is my board.
Five people, Jeff.
Correct, you get to vote. I'm only one vote. I'm only one vote. I'm only one vote. I'm trying to express to the community and I haven't gone into all of the details that I would like to because we still need to get a member on this board.
Well, you know what, do you know what the details are gonna happen, Jeff? And this is what I'm gonna tell you is gonna happen right now. These people, all these people on this meeting right now want Carol Lee to be seated. We're gonna make sure that's gonna happen and if we have to petition for a special election to make that happen, it's going to happen. You and Scott are gonna look like a couple fools because she's gonna get overwhelmingly elected. Let me finish. She's gonna get overwhelmingly elected. We're gonna waste thousands of dollars that we don't have in a special election because you two wanna play politics. Enough is enough.
Politics. Politics is a tricky word, Jeff, because when you.
Just because you're protecting, you are just, let's get it out there, Jeff. You are protecting the position of Eric Anderson.
I am.
Yes, you are.
I know what I'm doing.
A lot of things in this past and I'm gonna, you wanna air it out now? Let's air it out. Because people have done a lot of things that are questionable in the past and we wanna make them accountable and you keep covering for him. Enough is enough.
Okay, so, so, so let me ask you, Jeff. Um, when we moved, uh, so in October, we voted on, uh, Stephen King and Joe Godwin. And, uh, we skipped the November, um. Session because you, you, Carol sent us a, a no stating that, um, and we're talking politics, right? Carol sent a note out stating that, hey, um, we don't have, um. We didn't post this in the paper, so let's post this in the paper and sit there and miss it, but.
Let's give everybody a chance to apply for it. We gave it 30 days. That's what we usually give, 30 days.
But that, that's not what my point is. My point is Republican Town, the Republican Town Committee had their, their. Republican Town, the Republican Town Committee had their, their meeting on the twenty eighth of that month or the twenty seventh of November. We decided that we would post that and move it on the twenty ninth. You already knew who your candidate was. So to my point, to my point, you want to play politics. I, I took it as, hey, maybe that Carol and Jeff Murray didn't want anyone to know that Alicia Lee was going to potentially be the candidate for the board right before the election, and it might impact the outcome of the town clerk vote on the, on the charter. I don't think it would have ever in, ever voted it, but you'd want to talk about sweeping it onto the covers. That's what you did.
So that, I'm just giving everybody a fair chance to apply for the position, whether
You already knew who you were picked.
That was an endorsed candidate, but you can still, you can, like, what you said earlier, Jeff. You can, you can vote for a non-endorsed candidate, which Paula King was. Paula King was, in you, in your own words.
I, that's right. I
As a member, Vice Chair of the RTC, I have to honor the RTC
I agree with you.
Over who they, to who they endorse.
Yeah.
Point blank.
I agree with you. I know, I know, I know. Listen, Jeff, you You told me you didn't even go to the RTC meeting where Mr. King was endorsed because you knew the situation.
No, we didn't, Jeff. I was not in the state when that happened.
Yeah.
I wasn't, I didn't even know they were going to endorse anybody, to be honest with you. I had no clue whatsoever what was
Okay. Listen, we've had good candidates that we've had the opportunity to deal with.
And I'm telling you where it's going to go. If you two continue down this path, this is where it's going to go, and we're going to waste
I would love, well, and, and listen, listen, let's even go, because we're doing this all in public. Jeff, it's really hard for me as, as a member of this board to sit there and give you a potential candidate and you to tell me that that person is too close to me and you couldn't work with them, you couldn't endorse them. That's unacceptable to me.
Of course it is, Jeff, because you can influence anybody you want, and between you and Scott, you two can control the board with that third person.
And I was, and I was not going to let that happen. Voted together.
Get it out there. Let's get it out there. That was, I was, I am, I am fighting to not let that happen.
When, when? But one last thing, Ann, and I'll let you go. Jeff Murray, when, what has been the biggest vote that you and I have taken that we haven't agreed on? I'll give you just only one I know, it's the bikes.
This one right here. This one right here.
This one's the worst, but this, this, this one's because you never talked to us. You never sat there and said, could we do this? You, you
Jeff, you don't want to listen. Jeff, you want to ram through whatever you want. Talk to anybody else. And that is your agenda.
That's my agenda.
It is too, your agenda. You just admitted, and to everybody in public, that is your agenda.
My agenda is to have balance on the board.
Let's have, I, I'm, I'm all for a public vote. Let's just have, let's just have a vote. And let's let the
It's not what's in the charter, but
We can petition for a special election. We can petition.
And go ahead.
A couple of things. One is that I don't, wouldn't say that we would necessarily have bickering. I think we would have a difference of opinions. I think it's a lot better to have differences of opinions that we can easily discuss instead of having sheep that follow along, which is the feeling I get if you have all five people always agreeing on something. So I think a difference of opinion is healthy and we should allow somebody else in. And I'm thinking that as far as Carol is concerned, I think it'd be better for the relationships to have Carol on the Board of Selectmen than to have her in the town clerk's office. In the town clerk's office, she was always just down the hall from Eric, and there's a lot of chance to have the interactions. With her on the Board of Selectmen, you're going to have less problems than you've had. That's my opinion. Thank you.
Anybody else?
No, it's up to the two of you. Do you want to have a special election or not? That's where it's going to go. Because after tonight, that's where it's going, because we've gone three times with this, and that's what I'm going to push for. Because I've had enough. I've had enough of you guys playing politics. It's time to move on.
Jeff, you make me chuckle. You are the most politically active member of this board out of any of us. It's the truth.
Look, Jeff, you're the one that came out tonight attacking Carol.
I did not attack I am expressing
Along with Eric.
I am expressing to the community my biggest concern about this situation.
Well, I'm telling you where I'm at, and let's, let's go. We'll just vote and then we'll move on because we're done talking about this apparently, so. You guys made your bed, let's, you guys can sleep in it. We'll just move ahead.
Let's go. What are we doing?
We're going to have a vote?
I'd like to nominate Don Denly for Board of Selectmen position.
Is someone going to second that?
Doesn't need a second.
No one's
Does not need a second.
It does not need a second?
Right.
So I just, all those in favor? All those opposed?
For Don Denly?
Yes. Okay.
I'd like to nominate Carol Lee for the Office of Selectmen.
All those in favor? All those opposed?
Thanks for wasting the town's money, guys. I really appreciate it.
Okay. We've had great candidates that we could have put in. Just letting you all know. Beata Gdodamski would have been a great person. Joe Godwin would have been a good person. We could have ended this in October. So don't put this on Scott and I that we didn't sit there and, and have opportunities.
Of course. You guys have voted down three nominees in a row, so it is on you two. So if there's anybody to blame for the special election, it's the two of you. It's on you guys.
As you go. And then, and then when, and then when we have issues that creep up, which they were going to creep up, then we'll sit there and all have to deal with the ramifications of all of that. Okay. So we are now moving on to, uh, item eight, the Town Administrator's Report.
Okay, I did not put a written report in the packet. My focus right now is primarily on the budget. I did want to say a couple of things. Uh, we had the pre-construction meeting for the, uh, Bunker Hill Bridge that is on schedule with an expected closure date for Bunker Hill Road uh, at the Hop River approximately April first. Um, so things are going relatively well there. Um, we did get all the sound deadening material installed in the community center, so the main room in the community center is much more user friendly now. Um, work is ongoing on the kitchen. We should have a fairly functional kitchen minus the stove, uh, in about a week. Um, we still have to figure out what we're going to do for the main vent in the kitchen. Um, so that's basically all I have in terms of town administrator stuff unless you as a board have questions for me.
Anybody have any questions for Eric? Okay. Uh, item, uh, nine A, Community Center signage discussion. Uh, that one's still on me. I have to sit there and deal with Elaine now that she's back in the country and, and deal with the, uh, gentleman that did the signage on, uh, Route Six. So we'll put that off till next meeting, uh, as well. Nine B, Discussion of Blight and Level of Involvement. We have the list there. Does anyone have any questions related to any of those items on the list? Scott, do you have any issues?
No, nothing's
And and just one item real quick on that. Uh, technically, I believe at this Board of Selectmen meeting, they will be appointing the new zoning enforcement officer who will then become the blight officer. So we should as of next month have a new blight enforcement officer also.
You, you mean the next planning and zoning meeting?
Correct. Sorry. What did I say?
Board of Selectmen.
Oh, I said that by the next Board of Selectmen meeting, we'll have a new, uh, blight enforcement officer slash CEO.
Okay, nine C, Solar at AES. Um, we all received a significant amount of information from, uh, the, the Board Chair, the BOE, the BOE Board Chair for AES. Anyone want to sit there and say anything about solar project here? I know I'm waiting for the Board of Education meeting on Wednesday, but anybody have any issues they want to bring in public about the documents that we received?
I think they should be reviewed. The, the whole contract should be reviewed.
Oh, hundred percent. Uh, but does anybody
I just wanted to tell you that Ryan Laneras that's logged on here. Um, Ryan Laneras is the person since two thousand and twenty-two that has been working with AES, um, our boards from two thousand and twenty-two until now. Um, and so I asked him to come on because I know that there were some questions and concerns. And, um, this way you guys had a chance. He's graciously come on to our Board of Education multiple times. So I figured this way you guys would be able to. I know he and Eric have already spoken. Um, so that's Ryan.
Hi, Ryan, how are you?
Good evening.
Good. I, I'm not sure that we were prepared to ask you any specific questions on the contract since we just received it last week. But, uh, I'm sure as we move forward, we will probably have some questions. So apologize that you had to sit through our first, uh, hour of our meeting. Uh, but, uh, we will sit there and move forward and, and try to get you some questions. Maybe we'll sit there and get them written out, so maybe you can answer them by email, which might be more efficient.
Okay. Yep, that sounds good. I'm available anytime.
All right. Any of the other members have any other thing, anything specific they'd like to ask Ryan since he's sitting here? Anybody? Okay. Uh, Ryan, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yep. Uh, nine D, the Fire Department requests for self-contained breathing apparatuses, uh, this SCBA. Those were approved by, uh, CIP and are included in the budget?
They are included in the capital budget that I gave you.
Correct.
With a breakdown of what, how that would relate to the capital budget. And I think you have the Fire Chief on the call if you have any specific questions regarding SCBA, because he can answer those far better than I can.
You said the chief was on the phone?
Yeah, I think he and Dave Gastanian are both on the same line.
So Dave, or, or, or Mike, I mean, either one of you guys, just give us a little outline, just so the public understands what the request is for and why. So, if you wouldn't mind.
Fire Commission put in a request for twenty self-contained breathing apparatus units. Uh, the current ones we have now, I can't even tell you, Jeff. I'd have to say they're almost twenty years old, that I know. Um, and the problem with them that we have now is every time one of those air packs goes out for any kind of repair, it's almost a thousand dollar bill for repair. Um, so we're at that point now where we're spending, you know, on a yearly basis, we're probably spending as much to repair packs as it would to buy a new one each year. Um, the problem with buying them at separate times is the fact that the technology changes over the years, just like everything else. The last time we bought the sixteen packs we have now was done through a federal grant, and they were all bought at one time. So all the technology on them is all the same. So at two o'clock in the morning, when we're trying to put on a pack in the dark, you know it, you know, like the back of your hand, because they're, you know, they're all the same versus having a pack from two years ago versus a pack that was made today.
Okay. Um, and the request is for forty of them. Is that accurate or twenty of them?
Uh, I believe, and I don't have the Fire Commission's stuff in front of me. I believe they put in for twenty. Um, it was forty-two bottles. But I, I'm not sure if they, because you, you have two bottles to a pack. The NFPA requires one, one bottle, one spare bottle per pack. But I, I, I'm not sure if that went through CIP or if just the packs did. Because I know that the bottles that we have right now, the, the bottles have a shelf life of ten years on static testing. And right now we are like thirty of our forty-five bottles that we have now are pretty good for probably close to another ten years. You know, between eight to ten years' time. So we can take those bottles and use them with the new packs. Um, and what we've been doing is replacing four or five bottles a year to keep current with what we have. I believe the request was just for the air packs.
Okay.
Yeah, the official request was for twenty SCBA tanks, um, and then forty harnesses. Was what they requested.
Okay. All right. I know that's been approved by CIP and I knew it was in the budget that we, we saw. So, um, nine E, uh, Fire Department request and CIP approval for the cabinet and countertop replacement in the Fire Department. I believe that that is being taken out of the current year budget, uh, in the twenty thousand dollar range, Eric.
Yeah, that's correct. Pending, uh, three, uh, bids um, from the Board of Fire Commissioners or the Fire Chief that will presumably be taken out of the Building Maintenance Fund. Her money's currently in the Building Maintenance Fund.
Okay, and we have not approved that because we did not vote on that at the prior meeting.
Correct.
He said we would do it, but we wanted the quotes and we wanted to understand the final dollars.
Correct. And I left that on because I don't have that for you yet.
Okay. Uh, nine F, a Fire Department request for the tax abatement. We, um, we have the request. There is a document in this package. The town attorney also sent us an updated, uh, uh, document, uh, that we should share with the, the Fire Commission. So that they're aware of, uh, of the wording changes, no structural changes, but then we should sit there and review that. And, um, because we're not going to really vote on the town meeting uh, for this issue, uh, we actually have a little bit of time on this. We may have to come back on the town meeting, um, after the Board of, of Education meeting. So I'm just letting you know. So on this one, unless we want to review it, unless somebody wants to review the tax abatement document that's in here or the tax abatement document that, uh, the attorney has sent us.
If you want me to explain what I've done with it, I will. I can do that really briefly.
Sure, go ahead.
Well, I won't go over it line by line, but I mean, I think they did a wonderful job with it, but, um, I just, uh, changed, I made some cosmetic changes. Um, I, that I thought were, um, some were I thought necessary, especially near the beginning, the title, uh, whatnot, uh, but, uh, some of it, I, I just put it in language that I thought was more uh, appropriate, uh, for an ordinance and, um, cosmetically appropriate. And, and, uh, I didn't change very much of it. I thought the essence of it, the details, the substantive, uh, requirements, uh, and I researched this in the statute was all absolutely correct. And I just, uh, it's just a minor cosmetic, uh, review and change of it. And, um, that's, that's all I can say.
Okay. For the communities, uh, understanding the, the tax abatement level went from a thousand to potentially two thousand. The two thousand dollar tax abatement is based upon number of years, um, that Fire Department built up to that, and it's a retention, uh, issue to try to get people to be engaged in the volunteer fire department. All right, any, anything else related to the nine F? Okay, let's move on to, uh, ten B, Senior Transportation Repairs to the Dodge Caravan.
Sure. So I put some information in the packet. Um, but basically currently there's two issues wrong with the Dodge Caravan. So that everybody knows the Dodge Caravan is a handicapped accessible, uh, eight-passenger vehicle that is used for senior transportation. Um, so there's two things. There's been some, some damage to the side skirts to the vehicle, which have had two causes. The first is rust and the second is impact. Um, that need to be replaced. And the second thing is the transmission itself is failing. Um, that we did manage to get the vehicle to public works, but it's not drivable uh, as it is without a, uh, rebuilding the without rebuilding the transmission. So currently, those two items would considerably over expend the Senior Transportation Maintenance Line item. So I'm bringing it back to the board for suggestions as to what we're going to do with that vehicle. My suggestion is, given the cost of a replacement, that we're probably going to have to go ahead with this because we can't afford right now to be short one vehicle. If we're still going to provide transportation service to the school and be able to handle the other calls that we have. So do you have any questions for me on that?
What year is it, Eric?
It's a two thousand and fourteen, so it's eleven years old at this point.
Are there any grants out there for us to be able to replace that anytime soon?
They just opened the next funding round for the federal transportation grants. The town will apply for a new vehicle. And we'll also, so we will apply for the traditional and the non-traditional funding through that program with the state. However, best case scenario, if we apply now and the application is due in April, we wouldn't have another vehicle for another calendar year. So it's going to be, best case scenario, even if we get the grant on the first time around, it's going to be another year before that vehicle gets replaced.
How much is the transmission?
Nine thousand.
So we got three, we ended up getting three bids. The initial bid was nine thousand dollars. We finally got a signed bid from Terry Transmission for about forty-eight hundred. And another one from Mike Smith's Transmission and Danielson, that was forty-five hundred. You know, both for full rebuilds.
So when are we going to take the money?
So my suggestion at this point is that we take the money from contingency because we haven't tapped contingency for anything. And we don't, there's certainly nowhere else within the senior transportation budget that we can take tho, that level of expenditure. So it's going to have to come from outside the senior transportation budget.
Okay, so do you need us to vote on this so that you can do it? Is that what you're asking us to do?
Yes, I'm voting, I would ask that you vote to authorize both of those expenditures. The replacement of the side skirt body panels and the replacement of the transmission.
Now, you talked about getting three transmission quotes. Did you get multiple body quotes?
We attempted to. We brought it to multiple body shops. But because the side skirt panels are part of the mobility package that they build in with the ramps, we tried the local Olander's and we tried one other place. And neither of them will quote that because they can't get the, Mobility Works is the only company that can get the actual body piece to go in there. So that looks like that's our only shot if we're going to replace that.
Where's that shop?
I think Mobility Works is in East Hartford.
So are you going to send it?
So you're asking for almost a total of ten thousand dollars to put into that vehicle?
Correct. Basically forty-six hundred and, you know, thirty-three hundred. So not quite that much.
Not worth it, not worth it. It's not worth repairing because I guarantee there's more rust. If the rocker panels are rotten, there's going to be a lot more damage under there. That's going to be due to be replaced. It's just a matter of time. You're going to put ten thousand dollars in this thing and a year from now it's going to have more rot.
The question is, what do we do with the vehicle and what do we do with the residents that need the use of that vehicle? I mean, and Jeff.
Can we lease, can we lease? Can we lease? Can we lease a handicapped accessible van?
I don't know the answer to that question. I have not pursued that.
Can we see if we can lease for a gap? Because I can guarantee we're going to spend less than ten thousand dollars to lease. And we're going to get a reliable newer vehicle.
We are planning on going to town meeting.
Yes, we are.
You have to sit there and
And, and what I suggest in the future is we look at the Toyota Minivans because they're, all the new, the new Siennas are all hybrids. And they're very, very reliable.
Can I speak to that, Jeff?
Sure, go ahead.
And the reliability of the hybrid, we just took that into Lynch Toyota because of the battery itself. I believe that there was many hybrids during the last cold spell that brought Lynch Toyota an overwhelming amount of vehicles at that time. I would recommend not getting a hybrid next time only because of the cold of New England and the impact that it has on the battery. So we were without our brand new RAV four, and we were out, without that for several days that impacted the our medical transportation.
And what was the problem exactly?
It was too cold and it malfunctioned and they had to restart the battery.
Did you pre-warm the battery in the hybrid before you drove it?
We do pre-warm our batteries. We do pre-warm and we do have an inspection procedure that the drivers do do and that lasts anywhere from fifteen minutes to a half hour.
Well, the hybrid is under warranty, so if there's any issues, it should be repaired.
That's correct. At no charge. And what happened was we were still without the vehicle for at least three days.
And, and, and to be honest, to be candid, test, that could happen with any vehicle that we purchase.
It could, right.
And, and I have, I have a Tesla EV and I've driven it in ten degree and zero degree weather and I have not had an issue, so.
That's, I, I'm just telling you, Jeff, that.
I know, and I'm just telling you it's a couple of days. And so I wouldn't, I wouldn't, I would not let that keep me from driving, from purchasing another hybrid. Because if we just buy another Dodge, it's just going to rot out as quickly as this one.
And I agree with you there, but at the same time, we have medical clients that are expecting to get to their appointments and I would rather not take the three days and try to rearrange that. So if you have a solution, I am more than happy to hear it, Jeff, but otherwise.
All right, so next time that happens again with the dealer, I would have requested a loaner. That would have been easy. They have loaners there. They would have easily given you a loaner if you would have explained the situation.
They knew the situation, Jeff. I was very capable to explain the situation.
Maybe that's why we need that garage to get built soon because we didn't have any problem with our hybrid Sienna because we had the garage overnight. We could drive it in the cold weather just fine.
Well, I can tell you by experience that Lynch Toyota was overwhelmed with the amount of hybrid vehicles that were in their plate, in their office or in their shop at that time. And they were, then this is a twenty twenty-four.
Yeah, that's what I have too.
All good information to sit there and deal with. Valerie Bruno has her hand raised, so I'm assuming she's going to add to this conversation.
I just wanted to say, since that vehicle is also like a vehicle that is, that the school does work with the town, you know, we, we rent it from you guys. Once this Board of Selectmen makes a decision, could you potentially have a conversation with us? Because since it's utilized, the town could benefit from putting it through as our excess cost because it's utilized a portion of it for special education. And so you know with excess costs, the town does, after it hits four and a half times the amount of per pupil spending, they can apply for a little bit of a rebate with that. So whatever you guys decide in the end, if you could have a conversation with us, maybe perhaps, whatever it is you guys are doing with that vehicle since we are a part of utilizing it and it gets put on our materials for in-kind, perhaps. Because we do use it for special education purposes, there might be some benefit to the town.
Understood. All right, thank you. So I, I really don't want to spend that money, Jeff, on that vehicle. I do think we probably need to sit there and look at doing it. So Eric, how quickly can you sit there and see about a, I mean, I sit there and I look at that, that's a specialty vehicle. It has a specialty lift. You're not going to get a cheap lease on that really. But you've got to give it a go to, so we minimize our expenditure. So can you find out if there are any possible leases for a specialty vehicle like that? And then we as a board probably need to get together sooner than later on that to make a decision as to what we're going to do on that vehicle.
Emails.
That's fine.
Okay, I'll try to get you the lease information. I'll talk to Mobility Works tomorrow.
Yeah, see what they say. I mean, I'm assuming Mobility Works would be the one that would give you the lease or at least know where to go.
I do know, excuse me, Jeff? I do know that when I did call Mobility Works, that a used van to replace the one we have is upwards of fifty-five thousand dollars. A new one, and those are rare to find, he said, excuse me, forty-five thousand dollars. A new one would cost sixty-five thousand dollars. Around, around sixty-five for a new one.
Okay, and then Eric, just as a question, when the company gave us the body well, it was to me at Mobility Works, did they identify any other? Yeah, structural issues on that van?
That might be a test question. I didn't deal with Mobility Works directly. Tess?
Yeah, I'm happy to answer that. We took it to DuBois Auto, which is in town. And then they referred us to Olander's. Olander's referred us to another place. What happened was there was a significant amount of rust. One of those panels, the runners, it's called, fell off during route to a medical appointment. And so bear with me here. When we took it to DuBois, before they sent it out for transmission, this is the second time we brought it in. The second time, they did say that there was a heating assembly hose that was leaking. And forgive me, I, I think that was the diagnosis. And that would have been five hundred and five dollars to repair.
Okay, but did they tell you you had any other significant structural damage to the?
No, just the rust.
Okay. Eric, see what you can do as far as a potential leased vehicle. Hopefully you can have some success there. If, when you get that information, please just email it to the, to the board and we will sit there and make a decision as to what to do as far as repairing that vehicle.
Right, so Eric has mobility seen the van yet? And check the rust on, under it, or they just give you a quote on the skirts?
Again, that's a test question. Pretty sure the vehicle went into Mobility Works. Because Mobility Works is the one that took off the other side skirt. So they have seen the vehicle.
It's correct.
We probably need to get that taken in there and see if, like the frame or if it was something that was holding up the skirts that rusted out and the skirt came off. If the frame is still good, we probably need to get a number for see how to replace all those patching pieces. Need to find out more information, I would say.
What information you want?
Well, it's just the side skirt that rusted out and it fell off and why did it fall off? You know, what, what happened that it fell off?
Tell you that because we don't wash our vehicles and they sit there, rust on them for weeks on end.
Aside from that, Jeff, we, we need to know.
I mean, that's the reason we have this damage and we have this vehicle rotted out. And that's why last month I just said we need to get a contract for car washing these vehicles in the winter because they are just rotting out in front of us. We can't, with the price of these vehicles, we cannot keep just leaving them sit there and with salt on them all day. It's not, it's not right. It's not a good thing to do for the taxpayers to just let their tax money sit there and rot away in the parking lot. We gotta get, we gotta do a better job of keeping these vehicles clean.
That, that's a solution that we know we need to move forward with. What are we doing with this current?
I know, Jeff, but in my defense, I've been advocating this for, for six years now.
Eric already came up with a plan for that already. He did. But I want to know what's, is there attaching points for the side skirts? What rusted out actually? Is it the frame or what? What needs to be repaired actually? All we've heard about was the side skirt. That's it. They haven't heard what actually needs to be fixed. Side skirts didn't rust off. They fell off on highway zones.
No, no, I, I can, they, they fell off because it was rusted. And they couldn't hold on. There was nothing to attach to. That's why they fell off.
Okay, so to Jeff Murray's issue, please find out if there's more damage underneath that we're going to come back in another year and ask for money.
I mean, to be honest with you, once it gets to this point, you can't weld to rust. It's, it's, you're going to have to cut it back so far. It's going to be irreparable.
Yeah, I, I, Jeff Murray, I do agree with you there. I do agree that this vehicle is a twenty fourteen. It's probably seen better days, obviously. It is not in the prime of its life anymore, but it does serve a purpose for our for the citizens of Andover. Being here four months, we utilize that vehicle daily and it is a huge benefit to the town of Andover residents, our seniors. And so, yeah, we're just sort of stuck, stockware. Do we pay the eight, eight thousand dollars to repair it so that we can take our seniors to their appointments? Or do we go without? And so going without also means medical appointments, but it also means different things that we use that vehicle for as well.
We got to find a solution for it. I just, I just, I can't see putting money in this vehicle anymore if it's that rotten. And I said, there's going to be more things that you can't see. Once that, once those rockers rot, there's going to be more damage underneath it.
So how about this for starters? It's sitting at Public Works now. I'll have Zach take a look at it and give me his best evaluation about what's wrong with the vehicle currently structurally and what he thinks is reasonable, you know, for repair and start with that.
Right, what needs to be repaired? Exactly. That's what I would like to speak down.
Now, we know, I mean, I know because I own an identical vehicle to that, same year, same make, same model, that those vehicles all have transmission problems. So if you told me that it needs a new transmission, I would say, yeah, kind of most of them do by that point. I've been waiting for a year or two for mine, although it's gotten a lot clunkier. It hasn't really, it still runs, so I've ignored it on my own vehicle. But, you know, that I'm not surprised at. The, the rust thing, that's a valid point.
Please do that, Eric, and get us an answer on that. And then also try to find out if, if Mobility Works or someone else has some type of lease program that we can sit there and replace that vehicle with quickly.
And if we can't get one quickly, can we please get some price? I know Tess has got some pricing, but let's get some pricing on a Toyota and a Dodge or, and just evaluate the price because if we have to go that route and go public meeting, sounds like it's enough of a, a important vehicle that we should probably move ahead and try to replace it.
Excellent. Thank you, Jeff.
Item ten C, set a meeting date for these five items. I'm still waiting for feedback from the AES Board of Education. So at this point in time, I don't think we're ready to set a meeting date related to these items. We did receive the Fire Department tax abatement. The Fire Department engine financing. So that's in our packet. Can you explain that to us, Eric? The fire department engine financing. So that's in our packet. Can you explain that to us Eric?
Uh, sure. So, as you know, the town agreed uh two years ago now to purchase a new. Uh fire department squad vehicle for the fire department. Um and it will replace, it replaces two vehicles. It replaced the old heavy rescue vehicle. And it also replaced one of the engine tankers. Um, the newer thing that departments are going to is basically multitasking, so this one vehicle. Takes the place of two previous vehicles. Uh so. It takes a long time to get it built. We've been waiting for, for almost two years. It's looking like sometime in the May, June timeframe. It will be built. Um and now it's time, we do have to go to public meeting. Because even though we've approved the purchase, we've never approved finance details for that vehicle. Um, so that's what this represents, one of the, the financing options.
Have we been saving for this?
Yep.
Okay, so that's good. How much money is in it?
So that's, I'll tell you in two seconds. The fire engine fund currently has four hundred and thirty thousand dollars uh in it. But remember, that also takes into account if we approve the replacement of the SCBA gear. That would be two hundred and twenty one thousand dollars of that. The loan payment on the squad, a ten year loan payment is about a hundred and twenty five thousand dollars. Which is less than uh what is. That we're funding annually into the fire department capital equipment line. So it doesn't actually take a spending increase. But what that does mean is that with the payments on that squad, over the next ten years at that level of funding. You know, we only have about three hundred and twenty thousand dollars in capital funding available to the fire department.
Okay. So for everybody out there, we've had funding at a hundred and thirty seven thousand or a hundred and twenty five thousand dollars a year. If we took a ten year. Lease option, we're talking a hundred and twenty five thousand dollars a year. That would be, we would have to keep funding that level, funding that for ten years. And there would be no increase in the fire department fund.
Correct.
So. That's something for the fire commission to sit there and make sure that we're all in agreement with what we're. We're currently working towards, so we should sit there and, and get with them and make sure that they're. They understand what this is gonna do to move forward. So you're gonna take. Two twenty five, let's say two twenty out for the scuba tanks. That gets you down to two hundred thousand. And then a hundred and twenty five, so you'd really only have two hundred thousand dollars left in that fund in ten years.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
Alright, so that would have to go on to our eventual town meeting that we have. Right? The bank line of credit, just so everybody understands, it's all projects related to the Board of Education. The bank line of credit is related to funding that. I mean, we don't have a line of credit within the town, but it would help fund the Bunker Hill Bridge project, was a hundred percent paid for. But it would not allow, it would not require us to take it out of our reserve or. Our operational count, we could use that uh if needed, if we ever got into a position where we had to use it. Fire department tax abatement, everybody got the document that the town attorney sent. We should share that with the fire commission. The fire department engine financing is in here. There's a seven year, ten year and a fifteen year option. We have to look at that and vote on that option that we want to put in front of the town meeting. And then there's an ordinance uh circling out there that the town attorney wrote relating to. Um prohibiting dogs on uh athletic fields and recreational fields within the town. So. That would also be voted at a town meeting. Anybody have any other issues relating to the potential town meeting?
So we're not gonna schedule at this point?
No.
And you're gonna try to do a special meeting to schedule or what is your?
Uh, we might do it at a special meeting. We, 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 what was the reason why we have to have a special meeting anyway? We were talking about it before. What were we talking about before that we had to deal with? I mean, we're gonna have to deal with the, the, the. Repairs on the Dodge caravan, which was the other thing. So if we have to have a special meeting on Dodge caravan, we'll sit there and also put that there, but. I want the. Want the Andover Board of Education to weigh in on this before we do what we need to do.
Okay, fair enough.
Item eleven, the approval of a minute meetings for a January thirteenth, twenty twenty five. Anybody wanna make a motion? Anybody have any adjustments?
I make the motion to approve the minutes of January thirteenth, twenty twenty five.
I'll second. All those in favor? Aye. All those opposed? Alright, Jeff, did you vote?
I'm sorry, I had audio issues. What was the?
We were voting on the minutes.
Yep, I approved.
In favor, in favor. Excellent. Uh, item twelve, uh treasures report. That starts on. Page twenty five and continues down. Continues down till page twenty uh twenty thirty eight. Anybody have any questions or issues related to the finance report? Okay. Let's keep moving. Um. I did not see um. Was there a town aid road in there? That summary, Eric, I missed that one. I didn't see that one. I don't think that made it. I don't think that made it. There were no ratios transfer, there was an over expenditure report we don't have in the summary of the audit status, nothing. Tax collector's report. Actually, what is, uh, there was a request, I'm sorry. I thought I saw something. Twelve E, uh, over expenditure report. There's something filed in here um. So you were, you were.
So I, I filed that initially assuming that we were going to repair the vehicle. So that request, because I don't have the ability to authorize anything over fifteen hundred dollars. On a line item for a budget. Um however, since you've decided that you're, don't want to approve the, the repairs and that we're gonna consider leasing options. You could hold off on approval of that now.
Alright, so we're gonna bypass that. We're gonna go to uh. Item thirteen, the tax collectors report. The dashboard starts on page forty one. So we've collected, we have a total tax base uh according to the dashboard, ten million, one, one hundred thirty eight thousand, five hundred and fifty dollars. We've collected seven million, seven hundred and twenty seven thousand, one hundred and seventy four dollars. Still have two point four million dollars left to collect. Uh in the final quarter of the year. So we actually have two payments related to this. We have. Is that accurate Eric? We have just one payment left. We have one payment left in March.
Um, yeah, one payment left.
Got it. Okay. This last month, we collected one point five million dollars and. We have two point seven million dollars left to collect with taxes going back to two thousand eight. Alright. Tax collectors update, tax sale update. Attorney Cohen has agreed to assist with the tax sale. We have to uh sign the engagement letter. Is the engagement letter included in this?
Yep, starts on page forty seven.
Okay, does anyone have any issues related with uh starting the tax sale process with Attorney Cohen from? Pullman and Coom- Coomly. Anybody? No. Who's, who's the signature is required Eric? Yours or mine?
I think it could be either. Um if the board authorizes me to sign it, I can sign it. Uh but you would have to motion to that effect, um or the board would have to authorize you as the first selectman to sign it.
I'll make a motion that we authorize the town administrator to sign the Pullman and Colmley. Uh a tax sale engagement letter.
A second.
Over the process. Seconded by Scott Person. Anybody have any issues related to that? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Move forward with that. And, and just for the record, all of the fees for the attorney are related to collection of fees from the tax sales.
Correct.
Okay. Department reports, so um. The Office of the Assessor. Gave us a twenty twenty four grand list, which gives us a two percent decrease over the twenty twenty three grand list.
Correct. So that is driven by two factors. Um, one, it's driven by the fact that the uh state legislature offered relief to. Uh disabled veterans. So a, a fair bit of the uh real property. Um although we did have a slight increase absent that in real property, when you add that in, that was a. Slight decrease in real property. And the second in bigger contributing factor is that. Motor vehicles no longer get assessed based on any NADA values. They get assessed by uh taking the MSRP of the, the vehicle. Uh as it was purchased and uh. You know, basically uh devaluing that by the age of the vehicle. So, and there's a set formula for that. Um so those changes both negatively impacted the grand list in the town of Andover. Um, that's kind of a universal, almost all towns grand lists are decreasing this year because of the state regulatory changes.
Alright, we have all the department reports and item fourteen. The assessor's office. The adjustments. Four thousand dollars generated from the building department. Public Works report. And anybody have any questions? Feel free to ask as I move through them. Okay, and that's it for the departmental reports. Anybody have any questions? Okay, item fifteen correspondence Eric and no correspondence.
Uh, the only bit of correspondence I got, I got today, which was somebody that sent me a letter. Uh stating that he does not feel it's appropriate for the town to put fluoride in any drinking water in the town of Andover. Um which as most of you know, we don't have any municipal water supply, so I don't think there's anything actionable. Um, I did also get a complaint from somebody regarding the commuter parking lot on Route Six. Um, and I informed them that that was state property and that they would have to address that with the state of Connecticut. So that's basically it for correspondence.
Okay.
Jeff, could, could I make a motion to uh? Add the executive session that was seven B to the end of our meeting?
You can, uh you know, you. I'm assuming Dennis, that that should have been done in the additions and deletions.
Dennis?
Seven B, um.
It was, we, we didn't, we didn't talk about it Dennis in seven B, so.
Oh, the executive session on the uh. Well, you can do it. You don't have to vote to do it. You don't have to have a reason.
Yeah, this, I, I would like to. Change it to the end of the meeting here. Right, right now, the fifteen A.
Please state the purpose of the executive session, please.
You gotta, you gotta state a purpose.
Think about, I, I'd like to make a motion to talk about the, uh, personnel changes in the town of Andover.
I have no problem discussing that in public. We got something to say, let's say in front of everybody.
Jeff, Jeff Murray. Let's have an executive session, please.
So, listen, we're gonna go through public speak and. Scott, if I understand what you want, you would like the four board of selectmen members to sit there and, and have an executive session to discuss the current. Relationships or how we're caught in the dynamics related to the board.
Exactly.
No, let's discuss it in public and I will vote no for executive session.
Okay then, then we don't need to do it because that wasn't the point of it. So if that's what.
And what, what's your vote?
I don't see the reason for an executive session right now, no.
I've, I've made my point extremely clear to, to the board, so I have no reason to go in an executive session. Anything you want to say, we can say it in public. We don't need to hide behind an executive session. We need to talk in public and let people know what we're talking about.
Okay, so we're gonna move on to item sixteen, which is public speak and I'm going to start with Don Denly.
Am I, am I on now?
You are.
Okay, alright. Um, well, obviously, um, you heard, I want to thank Jeff Murray. For standing up and saying, saying point blank what's going on in this town. We've been stonewalled again by the first selectman. Um, to put a great person in this position and we knew this was coming. I mean, we, we knew when you started your conversation, giving all the accolades to Carol Lee, we knew you were going with this. I've known you for a long time and I know your personality. Um, you're, you're a power hungry fellow, okay? Um, you just are. You've chosen your own self-interest. In the support of our town administrator, who appears to be flawed at this point, um ahead of our town, okay? You've ignored. The will of the people and, and I love it when you give me the eyeball, you know, when you roll the eyeballs at me. It's one of my favorite things. It's right there when you catch me. Um, at the opening of the senior center and, and assaulted me verbally, privately of course. Um, Scott Person, uh, um, the fact that you wanted to go in executive session to say this is, is, says something about your character as well. You're a bit of a coward. And uh very disappointed in you as well. This, we have a very difficult budget season coming up and we should have a fifth selectman on board. Um, we can't always have the handpicked person from our first selectman, even though that's what he would like. Um, I'd like to also acknowledge and thank all the people who spoke in favor of Carol Lee. At this, at this meeting tonight, it shows courage and it shows where, where the will of the people. at this, at this meeting tonight. It shows courage and it shows where, where the will of the people, what we, what we wanted. And that, that was not taken care of. So, um, a- a- again, um, I guess we're gonna be sent to a special election, which will be maybe the first time in Andover, but that's probably what's gonna take place. And we will put, um, do everything we can to put Carol Lee in the selecting position. It, it, let's, it, let's not forget that, um, and, and those of us that have lived in this town for many years, as our first selectman has, is that Carol Lee worked successfully with four administrations. Ed Turner, Charlene Barnett, Bob, Bob Burmek, all of whom I worked with as well, and then our new our first town administrator, the young fellow who didn't work out that well, but she worked well with all these people. So the fact that, that Eric Anderson is having a, is having a problem apparently working with Carol is, is troubling to me. Um, and I, I think that, I think that's all I got for now, but this, we'll, we'll revisit this again. This, this item, um, will not go away. Um, again, very disappointed, um, at the, the power struggle and the power we're, we're seeing taking place, um, by our first selectmen. And, um, we'll, we'll turn the page and, um, move forward, but, uh, this is not, this, this battle is not over. Thank you.
Ben and Laden?
No comment. Thank you, Jerry.
No, that, no comment.
Thank you.
Joanne Ebert?
No comment right now. Thank you. Just listening to all of this.
Alright, please, Lowcatch?
Did, I'm sorry, did you say my name?
I did.
Uh, okay, my dog was barking. Uh, I'm, I'm fine. Thank you all.
Alright, Danny Holds Claw? No comment, thank you. Scott, so yet?
This is, I'm embarrassed. This is very embarrassing to watch. That's it.
Carol Lee?
Just want to say that I get along with Eric. He has a problem with me. And Jeff, every time you came in to talk with me, not once did you say, Carol, what's going on? You came in and said, Carol, you have to get along with Eric. You know what? I've worked with him, I've helped him, and I've accepted everything that has been placed in my office doesn't even, well, it's not my office anymore, but into the town clerk's office that didn't belong there. And I've done it to help our town. And I'm sorry, but you should have asked me what was going on, not just take the five or six phone calls from Eric saying that I'm doing something terrible to him.
Diane Griner? I'll come back to you, Diane Kimberly Person.
Uh, nothing at this time, thank you.
Valerie Bruno?
Nothing at this time, thank you.
Um, I'll come back to that. Stephen King?
Thank you for, uh, letting me address, as you put it, your board, Jeff. Jeff McGuire, Scott Person, the two of you should be ashamed of yourselves, really. Uh, to continue to kick this can down the road after being presented with candidate after candidate that's completely qualified. And you reject them because of petty partisan politics. I, I'm appalled, I really am, okay? My hats off to Jeff for standing up and also Ann Krem, because she echoes integrity. She's echoed integrity through this entire process, and I have the utmost respect for her, especially as a Democrat. Okay, now it's gonna hit the town in the, in our, in our pocketbooks because this is gonna go to a special election. Okay, I'm gonna make it my mission to knock on everybody's door in this town and in support of Carol Lee and get her elected on this board. So it's gonna end up with Carol Lee on the board anyway, okay? That's all I have to say.
Ms. Graus?
Hi, thank you. Um, I just do wanna raise a, a concern in regards to the last board of selectman meeting that happened. Um, there was a um, executive session, and I don't believe that that was, um, done properly. I'm asking that you review what the procedures are for Robert's rules in regards to, um, me being invited at the last minute and not giving twenty-four hours notice of, um, that executive session and discussing my, um, specific role and responsibilities. Um, I would also like to, um, just for the record, um, state that, um, the probationary period. Um, well, I guess I would ask the question first of, um, where does it state a probationary period and, um, how long that is? Uh, if somebody could answer me that, that would be great. Um, I wasn't able to find it in the, um, town charter. I wasn't able to find that in the handbook for employees, and I wasn't able to find that in my contract. So if somebody could find out that information for me, that would be great.
Caitlin McIntosh? I'll come back to you. Catherine McGoldy Lewis?
Hi, yes, I have quite a lot to say, actually. Um, I, like other people here, are stunned at, at the unprofessionalism from the first selectman Jeff and from selectman Scott. Um, it was sophomoric. And to actually air personal grievances at a meeting such as this was just uncalled for. It was just bizarre. And leaders, real leaders, don't place blame, especially publicly on another member of their committee. And for you, Jeff, to say, I miss Paula and would take her back in a heartbeat. What, how rude? Why don't you just come right out and say, I don't like Ann? Basically what you were saying, and you don't because Ann won't fall in line. And I'm very, very happy that she won't, because she does have integrity. And regarding your tirade on the DTC and being kicked out of the DTC, I was chair then. And, and actually, this is on tape on Zoom, so you can go back and look at the meeting. And the statement don't even reflect what actually happened at all. It's, the first words out of my mouth were, when you came onto that meeting with Scott to help you, was, we are not here to beat up on Jeff. We're here to find out how to go forward from this issue. And the issue was that as first selectman, you publicly said that the person who the, the woman who had sued Jay for sexual harassment had received too much money. And there was a mother in Andover whose daughter was harassed, who was very upset by that, and wrote to me personally and wrote to the DTC. So we had to take action. And that action was still to talk to you and ask you if you would please apologize and try to understand how that woman felt. Everybody was beyond nice to you. No one attacked you. No one was rude. No one was mean. I chaired that and I know it. And I have it on tape to note. And you refused to apologize. All you did was say, I stick to my, my opinion, I stick to my opinion. Go ahead, stick to it, that's fine. But it was your personal opinion, and any good lawyer should tell you, as I taught in management skills, that if an agreement is reached or a settlement is reached outside, you say nothing. Nothing. And as first selectman to publicly say something was awful, and you put us in a very difficult position. So that's what happened with the DTC. And as far as Carol Lee is concerned, this is just absolutely crazy. I will reiterate what Don Denly said. She has worked for multiple town managers, multiple first selectmen, has gotten along with every single one of them. She also gets along just fine with all of her coworkers. So the issue that tells me is with Eric, not with Carol. But you won't look at that, will you? You won't refuse to see that. And as a leader, again, as managers, you should be able to separate your feelings, personal feelings versus professional feelings and act professional. So I don't understand, Jeff, how you come on and sing Carol's praises and say she's one of the best people in Andover and how much she's done in Andover, and then vote against her. It's bizarre and it's, and it's tragic. And that's, that's all I have to say because I could, I could just go on, but I'm just too upset.
Alicia?
No comment, thank you.
Uh, phone number that ends in five, four, seven, five? Leann Hutchinson? Phone number that ends in four, two, nine, four? Bob Hamburger?
Yeah, um, I, I, I think hell has frozen over again. Uh, considering that Don Denly and I seem to be agreeing on something. Um, most of what I'm gonna say is, is addressed to you, Jeff McGuire. Um, first, I appreciate the openness and candor, uh, expressing your reservations about having Carol on the board of selectors. And for the record, I think it goes without saying, you know how much I respect your commitment to the town and your intellect in general. But I believe that your reasoning has some basic and fundamental flaws on this subject. So you expressed the problems you've witnessed, you believe you've witnessed between Carol and Eric, that they may have had working together. But I believe that these issues were fundamental, specific to them fulfilling their roles as town clerk and town administrator respectively. And having Carol working on the, on the, uh, you know, on the board as a, uh, you know, having Carol working in the role as a member of the board of selectors is fundamentally different. If for no other reason, then there's no requirement, there's no need for a select person to directly interface with the town administrator. In fact, I would contend that, Jeff, in your role as first selectman, I would expect you to be the primary, if not the single and sole point of contact, between the other select persons on the one hand and the world beyond the board on the other. And that outside world that I'm talking about includes Eric also. And the kind of dynamic that I'm talking about here is pretty much the same as any manager in any business, the way that they isolate the workers inside their department from everybody else. The manager acts as a funnel, as a lightning rod, they distill down the inputs and the feedback, and they filter and shield their department from what's going on outside. So I don't see the kind of monumental breakdowns in cooperation that you alluded to by having Carol on the board. But rather something that might boil down, admittedly, to a potential headache for you, Jeff, possibly having to run occasional interference. But I weigh that against the benefits to the town of having Carol on the board, which you and everybody else have agreed would likely be overwhelmingly positive. With all that in mind, I'd like for you to reconsider your position before the town is compelled to take alternative actions, which may be even more contentious than what we've seen here, or at the very least, like what Jeff Murray alluded, very expensive. That's all I had.
Okay, Matt Young? Okay, I wanna go back to, um, Diane Griner, if you can come off of mute. Okay, did I miss anyone in this meeting that would like to have, uh, speak?
Hi, sorry, I couldn't get myself off of mute I, earlier either. Um, just wanted to say on behalf of the Board of Education, we will be, um, talking about solar, and I have final contracts to sign, um, for our meeting on Wednesday night. So any of you on the Board of Selectmen, you, those have all been shared with you guys. If you have any questions, if you could please, um, get them over to me, uh, via email, that would be great, just so we can get everything addressed um, before, so that we're prepared on Wednesday. Um, thank you.
Okay, anyone else that I missed?
Jeff, can I say one more thing?
You already spoke, Don.
So it's a no?
Go ahead, Don. I always like to hear from you.
Well, I just wanted to thank the board and yourself for running an open forum this evening, as was said by a couple other people. At least it was honest and it was informative, and you guys didn't sneak in the back room. Um, so I, we appreciate that. I also would like to thank Ann Kremay for her, uh, for her integrity and for her open mindedness on, on all these subjects. That's it. Thank you.
Here's anyone else? That's me. Alright, um, I'm gonna make a motion to adjourn.
Second that.
Okay. All those in favor? Aye. Alright, thank you very much. You can stop the recording, Eric.